Good evening, and welcome to the Glendale City Council meeting on January 25th, 2022, being called to order at 6:03. To help slow the transmission of COVID-19 and protect the health and safety of the community, City Council, as well as board and commission meetings, will continue to be closed to the public for in-person attendance. The public is encouraged to watch and participate from the safety of their homes to practice social distancing. Meetings are broadcast live on Glendale TV, viewable on Spectrum Cable, Channel 6, and AT&amp;T U-verse, Channel 99. Meetings are also streamed live in high-definition on the city's webpage, glendaleca.gov/live, on youtube.com/miglendale, and on Apple TV, Roku, and Amazon Fire Devices using a free app called Screamweave and choosing Glendale TV from the menu. For public comments and questions this evening during the meeting, please call 818-937-8100. Public comments on specific agenda items will be taken, and that item is discussed. With that, may we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Agajanian.
President!
Brotman.
President!
Here.
Kusakian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
And Mayor Devine.
Here. Next item?
The agenda for the January 25th, 2022 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on January 18th, 2022 on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Next, the flag salute.
Please stand for today's flag salute.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for tonight's invocation. Heavenly Father, thank you for your kindness and generosity in our lives. Thank you for blessing our city and for helping our council and mayor work towards success. Help us with increased productivity during this meeting. Help us ask questions that will keep us on the right path. We pray now and accept your will. We trust that you will guide us in paths that are good and true. We ask all of this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. And next?
Next would be presentations and appointments. 3A Agenda Preview for the meeting of Tuesday, February 1st, 2022, by John Tukthalion.
Thank you, Mr. Tukthalion.
Good evening, Mayor Devine, members of City Council. Next week's City Council meeting has two consent items. The first will be a report from the Police Department regarding acceptance of a DNA capacity enhancement and backlog reduction grant, and that'll be followed by a report from Glendale Water and Power regarding the fiber optic network expansion project. We also have two action items. The first will be from the Public Works Department. It'll be a report outlining further recommendations on the state of the community forest. And the final item that evening will be a report from the City Clerk, asking the City Council to call for and give notice of the municipal election to be held on June 7th, 2022. That concludes next week's preview.
Okay, thank you. And next item?
Next item is consent items, including the minutes. The following are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed.
Madam Mayor, can we have 4F pulled from the agenda?
4F, please. Yes, okay.
Madam Mayor, 4C, please.
4C. Okay, thank you. All right.
I'll move the balance.
All right. Second, from not Councilmember Najarian. Roll call, please?
Councilmember Agajanian.
Yes.
Brotman.
Yes.
Kusakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
And Mayor Devine.
Yes. And let's hear 4C, please, a report, and following.
4C would be Public Works regarding Glendale Beeline Battery Electric Bus Grant Agreement Resolution authorizing the city manager or is designated to execute the project grant agreement and project readiness certification with Los Angeles County Metropolitan Transportation Authority, Metro, to receive federal congestion management air quality program funding and Measure M multi-year subregional funds to purchase five battery electric replacement buses and two resolution of appropriation in the amount of $2,186,396 federal grant funding for the purchase of five Beeline electric buses.
Terrific. Okay. Mr. Councilmember Najarian, do you just want to comment, or do you want to report?
Yeah, I just wanted to highlight again, this is a great funding that we received from Metro. This was originally something that we were working on back in 2015 for the Call for Projects. Call for Projects is a competitive event where cities from all over the county apply for funding in different categories. We were successful, back in 2015, to receive funding for what we then thought would be CNG buses. Of course, CNG was all the rage seven years ago. We thought we were saving the planet by going CNG. Things have changed. Fortunately, that funding did not come through in 2015, but it is available now. And thank you, staff, for pivoting, if you will, with Metro and obtaining permission to go the battery-electric route. And I know there's more funding we're going to be pursuing with the federal government on this, but it looks like we're going to be getting our first permanent four battery-electric Beeline buses. And most of our air pollution, as you know, is caused by mobile sources, and this serves two benefits. It cuts the emissions from what would otherwise be CNG buses, and it encourages people to get onto transit. And I hear that gas prices are going to near $6, are going to be near $6 a gallon in the near future. So what better way for us to gear up for hopefully some increased transit use by our residents than to invest in these battery-electric buses? So thank you, staff, for making this happen, and thank you to Metro. This is some more funding we get from Metro. Oftentimes, it goes unnoticed, but I think I'm going to start mentioning it when we get it. So we're all appreciative, and we can direct our sources, direct our efforts to get even more money from Metro for some of our projects. And that's all I wanted to highlight, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. This is great. And let's pull item, then, let's read the item.
Would you like to move item C?
4F? 4F? Well, I'll move that one. I'm going to move them together, if you don't mind.
Actually, Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, apologize. We should take them separately.
Oh, okay. All right, then. Is there a motion for item 4C?
I'll move it.
Second, Councilmember Kusakian. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian.
Yes.
Brotman.
Yes.
Kusakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
And Mayor Devine.
Yes. And let's hear 4C, please, a report, and following.
4C would be Public Works regarding Glendale Beeline Battery Electric Bus Grant Agreement Resolution authorizing the city manager or is designated to execute the project grant agreement and project readiness certification with Los Angeles County Metropolitan Transportation Authority, Metro, to receive federal congestion management air quality program funding and Measure M multi-year subregional funds to purchase five battery electric replacement buses and two resolution of appropriation in the amount of $2,186,396 federal grant funding for the purchase of five Beeline electric buses.
Terrific. Okay. Mr. Councilmember Najarian, do you just want to comment, or do you want to report?
Yeah, I just wanted to highlight, again, this is a great funding that we received from Metro. This was originally something that we were working on back in 2015 for the Call for Projects. Call for Projects is a competitive event where cities from all over the county apply for funding in different categories. We were successful, back in 2015, to receive funding for what we then thought would be CNG buses. Of course, CNG was all the rage seven years ago. We thought we were saving the planet by going CNG. Things have changed. Fortunately, that funding did not come through in 2015, but it is available now. And thank you, staff, for pivoting, if you will, with Metro and obtaining permission to go the battery-electric route. And I know there's more funding we're going to be pursuing with the federal government on this, but it looks like we're going to be getting our first permanent four battery-electric Beeline buses. And most of our air pollution, as you know, is caused by mobile sources, and this serves two benefits. It cuts the emissions from what would otherwise be CNG buses, and it encourages people to get onto transit. And I hear that gas prices are going to near $6, are going to be near $6 a gallon in the near future. So what better way for us to gear up for hopefully some increased transit use by our residents than to invest in these battery-electric buses? So thank you, staff, for making this happen, and thank you to Metro. This is some more funding we get from Metro. Oftentimes, it goes unnoticed, but I think I'm going to start mentioning it when we get it. So we're all appreciative, and we can direct our sources, direct our efforts to get even more money from Metro for some of our projects. And that's all I wanted to highlight, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. This is great. And let's pull item, then, let's read the item.
Would you like to move item C?
4F? 4F? Well, I'll move that one. I'm going to move them together, if you don't mind.
Actually, Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, apologize. We should take them separately.
Oh, okay. All right, then. Is there a motion for item 4C?
I'll move it.
Second, Councilmember Kusakian. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian.
Yes.
Brotman.
Yes.
Kusakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
And Mayor Devine.
Yes. Thank you. Now with, will you please read 4F into the minutes?
Glendale Water and Power, Glendale Water and Power regarding award of design-build contract for the pipeline management program fiscal year 2021, 2022, Phase 1 project. Motion authorizing the city manager or is designated to enter into it, execute a design-build contract with JD Sigio Construction Incorporated of Baldwin Park, California for the pipeline management program fiscal year 2021, 2022, Phase 1 project in the amount of $5,750,000 plus a 10% contingency of $575,000. Two resolution of appropriation in the amount of $3,825,000 for the pipeline management program fiscal year 2021, 2022, Phase 1 project.
Madam Mayor?
Yes. Councilmember Kusakian.
So I pulled this item because I hadn't checked my email, and right before logging on for this meeting, in order to bring up the link to this meeting, I saw that there was a protest letter that was submitted. I didn't have a chance to read the protest letter and staff's response to it. It was included in that. I know that this is a consent item, and unless it's absolutely time-sensitive, if we could move it to next week's consent calendar, that would be appreciated for me to review what the matter is, and particularly because the company issuing the protest appears to be a local company, a Glendale company. I don't know if any of the other two were, but I'd like to at least do the due diligence to read and find out what the issues with it were.
Excuse me. I read it, but I will second it.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
May I ask a question as to the, as to the process? In some other agencies, when there is a protest filed, it is not put before the governing board for resolution. It's often put before a committee or a team of the executives. Is that how we, is that how we resolve protests on these type of items? I guess, Mr. Garcia?
Madam Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Najarian, so just a couple of things. So, you know, I know the words "bid protest" are used, but this is actually a proposal in response to requests for proposals. So any sort of bid, the law regarding bid protest, in our view, is not necessarily applicable. In addition, it's not, we don't have that sort of review process. We, you know, when we get a protest of a bid, we look at it with the department that is considering awarding the bid, or the department that worked on the bid, to see whether or not there's valid issues to be raised, and then we advise the City Council as the decision-maker, which is what we've done here. So we're happy to answer your questions now, or if the council wants to continue, we'll be happy to answer questions next week.
So bottom line, it comes to us as the governing board?
Yes.
To resolve any protest?
That's correct.
Dispute, let's say.
If my colleagues choose to move forward with it, that's fine. I'll just abstain because I haven't had a chance to read this.
No, I'm not saying we go forward. I just wanted to clarify that the process.
And with full disclosure, I've already, I've talked to the company that's doing, has put in the protest, so if you, does council want to postpone this till next week?
I would support that, yes.
Okay. Do we need a, just a second on that, right, Mr. Garcia?
All right, we can take it off calendar and bring it back next week.
Okay, so we'll take it off calendar and bring it back next week. And that's it?
Yes, ma'am.
That's all, thank you.
Okay. All righty. Next item, please?
City Council and staff comments.
Madam Mayor?
Yes. Councilmember Kusakian.
A few weeks back, I had, I had to announce the unfortunate news of the passing of a member of our community, and at that time, I didn't have information readily available to properly acknowledge his contributions to the community and give information about this gentleman's background, a dear friend, someone that we, most of us, I feel, have known. And I'd like to, at this time, request that we officially adjourn this evening's meeting in memory of Patrick Campbell. Patrick Michael Campbell was born on September 10th, 1971, and died suddenly on January 6th of 2022, just a few weeks ago. And the world has been changed forever for his friends and family and those who knew him. His tremendous legacy can be seen in his beloved children, Riley, 24, Hannah, 21, Connor, 16, and Dominic, 5, as well as his first grandchild, Brooks, who was just born around the holidays. During his time in Glendale, Patrick didn't just run a popular downtown business. He participated in many nonprofit organizations, including the Character and Ethics Project, Glendale Healthy Kids, Glendale Arts, the Downtown Glendale Merchants Association, Downtown Dash, and the Jingle Bell Run. Known around town as Coach Patrick to many, he was often on the sidelines coaching girls and boys AYSO soccer and CST basketball. He was also the recipient of the 2008 Glendale Latino Association Man of the Year Award and Glendale Fire Department Sunrise Rotary Service Above Self Award. Patrick was a diehard Dodgers fan, master griller, mentor, friend to many, and in his rare off-time, he just wanted to spend time with his family, playing board games, and going to the beach. In addition to his children, Patrick leaves behind his partner Tracy, with whom he shares his youngest child. The world is dimmer now that his light has faded, and he will be forever missed by those who loved him most.
Thank you, Councilmember Kusakian. Would anyone like to make a comment on his passing? I would, if no one else does. I've had, I've known Patrick for many years through working in the community, volunteering. I know he was always happy, jovial, and always ready to help out and donate, whether it was food, or catering, or whatever. And I know Seroptimist International of Glendale is missing him terribly because he worked a lot with the Seroptimists. So my deepest, deepest condolences to the family, and I'm so sorry that this, this event occurred. It's just very painful, I know. So God bless you all. Okay, moving on. Anything else, Mr. Kusakian, Councilmember?
No.
All right. Anyone else?
Madam Mayor?
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes, I have, sorry, I have two items. First one is regarding the 49th anniversary of Roe v. Wade, which took place just this past weekend. And for many of us who support reproductive freedoms, we're concerned that it may be the last anniversary with the Supreme Court planning to rule in June on a case that's expected to overturn this constitutional right to abortion. So against this background, I'd like the council to consider a resolution proclaiming Glendale a reproductive freedom city and a community that remains committed to protecting access to safe, high-quality sexual and reproductive health care, including abortion. A resolution was presented to me with a request that we agendize it from Planned Parenthood, and I've submitted that draft resolution to staff. If I could get a second, my hope is that staff would review it and bring it back to us, you know, as soon as workload and council calendar permits. And I understand, you know, this is symbolic. The state has passed a similar resolution. Reproductive rights are not being threatened here, but I think the symbolism is important, and the words are important, so I would ask for a second on that item.
If there is no other second, then, Madam Mayor, I'll defer to you, but if there isn't an all-second, yeah.
Does anyone want to make a comment on this? I, from my work on the Commission on the Status of Women, and I'll ask Mr. Galanian and Mr. Garcia about this. I know we often were faced with decisions similar to this. We did, of course, support Denim Day. Would there be any objections legally to us looking into this, or as far as our, I don't know, our philosophy, or what we've done in the past, our reputation, or other decisions we've made in the past regarding human, not human rights, but reproductive rights, and et cetera? Would there be any objection?
Madam Mayor, members of City Council, I don't want to speak on behalf of the city attorney. I don't believe there is any, any legal liability with passing this resolution.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Garcia?
I would concur. I think you're maybe referencing prior policies to sort of, sort of not address some of these issues or symbolic issues in that manner, but it's certainly within the council's purview to ask for this resolution to come back and, and have a discussion about it.
Because I remember when I was on the commission, there was an issue on abortion, and we were, we were told, or instructed not to, or council would not go near it because of the controversy. So if Mr. Councilmember Kusakian is willing to second the moat, then we'll move forward with that.
Madam Mayor, as I understand it, it's a resolution just simply upholding a law or restating a law that the Supreme Court of the United States has already made a decision on protecting and has rendered, so I don't see an issue with it. I think it's just, you know, reaffirming a position that all cities in the United States have.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kusakian. What was your second, Mr. Brotman?
My second item, much more mundane, but nonetheless important. I'm getting a lot of emails, and I'm sure we all are, about the trash being left on the streets, illegal dumping of furniture and other items. And I want to make sure that the haulers are proactively looking for these items and picking them up. I know that that's what they're supposed to be doing, and I have had correspondence with Mr. Imran, and he assures me that that is their intent. I just want to make sure that we, we communicate with them, and we check that they are doing this. And I should say, there's a lot of confusion. If you, if you look at Nextdoor or anywhere, you'll see there's a lot of confusion about this. So I would like to clear up what the rules are about bulky item pickup, but in particular, the responsibility of the haulers in their zones to pick up items, and also the use of the MyGlendale app, whether that is still the way that people should indicate items that have been, that have been left on the street.
Is Mr. Imran available?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of City Council. Be happy to answer that question. So the haulers are responsible for picking up all abandoned items in, within the public right-of-way in their respective zones. We encourage our residents to use MyGlendale app to report that to us, and then we will forward that to them to make sure that they receive it, or they can contact their respective hauler, haulers directly. But again, we would encourage them to use MyGlendale app, excuse me, because that would have a record of these things coming through. In terms of the bulky items pickup, which is the differentiation with bulky items, is these are scheduled beforehand versus, you know, being dumped in the public right-of-way.
It's by pickup.
So these, the bulky items are limited for the commercial, and the multifamily units of five or more are limited to four pickups per year, and those have to be scheduled through the property manager or property owner for that particular complex. But anything that's in the public right-of-way as an abandoned item, the franchise haulers do have a roving truck that goes around Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and picks these up. And again, if there are any reports of that, please feel free to use the MyGlendale app and, or call Integrated Waste Management and notice note.
Thank you. And may I ask just one follow-up question on the bulky item pickup in this, this four times per year arrangement that we have with the haulers? So in an apartment building, and this is a question that's come up, so you have people coming and going and all the time, right, and they have items that they want picked up. How, how, you know, how does it work that there are four times? So if it's, you know, once a quarter, let's say, what happens in the interim if somebody has something and, you know, it's not time to perhaps to have that scheduled pickup? Because my fear is that, you know, with that four times per year rule, that people are just going to say, well, forget it, I'll just, you know, I'll just dump it on the street.
So the four, the quantity four that we negotiated was, again, also designed to keep the cost down for, previous to that, for those residents that have city services, we had unlimited service, unlimited pickup per year. And even with the unlimited pickups, we didn't really see a whole lot of, you know, usage of that. Some people used it, but we, we had a, we still had a large abandoned items problem. So we settled on four to keep the cost down as much as possible. There is a, there is a price table that if a particular apartment complex goes beyond the four, then the, they can basically add additional pickups, however many they like using that cost specified in the, in the contract.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying that.
Hey, Councilmember Agajanian or Najarian? I can't see you.
Nothing for me. I did.
Okay. I just want to mention one item, and that is that I want to congratulate our Director of Community Services and Parks, Oni Bolanikian, and his staff for the Brand Park T-Ball Field that we, Councilmember Kusakian and I, and many of the parks commissioners cut the red ribbon for on Saturday. It's fantastic. Staff did a great job. They did all the work and saved the city a lot of money, and it's beautiful, and the kids loved it. And so go up there and check out this T-Ball field and, and watch the young people play ball there. And so, thank you very much. Okay, how about staff comments?
Madam Mayor, well, staff doesn't have any comments. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. All right, let's go to the next item.
Madam Mayor, the next item is community vet announcements, three-minute portion. I do not have any callers at this time.
Oh, okay. Well, let's move on to the next item, then.
Next item would be seven, adoption of ordinance, 7A, city attorney regarding an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Glendale authorizing the partial repeal of ordinance number 5974 that authorized execution of a development agreement by and between the City of Glendale and Vista Investment LLC. It was introduced by Councilmember Agajanian on January 18th, 2022.
Mr. Agajanian, would you like to move this item? Oh, okay, well, let's move on to the next item, then.
Next item will be seven, adoption of ordinance. Seven A, City Attorney, regarding an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Glendale authorizing the partial repeal of ordinance number 5974 that authorized execution of a development agreement by and between the City of Glendale and Vista Investment LLC. It was introduced by Councilmember Agajanian on January 18th, 2022.
Mr. Agajanian, would you like to move this item?
You're on mute.
Councilmember Agajanian?
I'm sorry, I was on mute. Okay, I will move item seven A.
Thank you. You're welcome. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Kusakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Devine?
Yes, and the next one?
Item seven B, community development, regarding an urgency ordinance of the Council of the City of Glendale, California, extending ordinance number 5981, establishing interim standards and ministerial processes for reviewing and approving eligible SB 9 project and setting minimum SB 478 floor area ratio standards for certain multifamily housing development projects for a period of 10 months and 15 days. It was introduced by Councilmember Agajanian on January 18th, 2022.
Thank you. Do we have any phone calls in this one?
I do not, Mayor.
Okay.
I will move item, I will move to item seven B, please.
Madam Mayor, it looks like we might have a phone call coming in at this point. I'm waiting for somebody to type something up.
Okay, okay.
Well, I'll give a second in the meantime.
Thank you.
No, it looks like the caller has left. Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. Then we'll have roll call, please. We have a, Councilmember Agajanian moved it, and Councilmember Brotman seconded. Roll call.
Councilmember Agajanian?
I have a question from City Attorney. Am I right? Before, when we would introduce an ordinance, you were saying that it doesn't need second at the time when a roll call would be called, you know?
All right. We're talking tonight. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
That's right, that's right, Madam Mayor. So the introduction is just an introduction. It gets introduced by one council member, Councilmember Agajanian. Then when it comes back for adoption, it needs to be moved and seconded and taken, approved via roll call vote.
Okay.
So, roll call?
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Kusakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Devine?
Yes, next item?
Next item is nine hearings, nine eight, community development, regarding adoption of 2021, 2029 Glendale Housing Element.
Thank you. We have the report, please, Mr. Galanian. This is how open the public hearing?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of City Council.
I'm sorry, I just was saying, this is only 450 pages. I was trying to read it, but it's very difficult, I guess.
Big one.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, members of City Council, thank you for opening the hearing. I'm going to ask Phil Lanza fame, our Director of Community Development Department, for introductory remark, and we have our consultant on the call, who will do the bulk of the presentation for you tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, staff is pleased to introduce the sixth cycle housing element update of our general plan tonight. The housing element is, for all intents and purposes, a policy document where we collect all of the goals, policies, and programs for the city that are aimed towards housing in one document. As a policy document, it's somewhat flexible, meaning it's not the end-all to be-all. Council is certainly free to add and enhance it at different points throughout the eight-year cycle as a result of things we may be working on at the time. Having said that, the housing element is also treated as something of a contract between the city and the community, and the city and the Department of Housing and Community Development. That is the state agency that implements and oversees housing elements of all the municipal jurisdictions. As a result, the programs in the housing element are those that we have committed to throughout the entire cycle. They're programs that have been, for the most part, vetted through the City Council, or they're added as requirements for housing elements statewide. Programs that have a limited life, while important to housing, may not be specifically listed in the element, but it doesn't mean that they aren't important and that we won't administer them. An example this is, an example of this is the monthly housing subsidy program. Certainly, that's an important rental assistance program. However, it's a two-year program, and the council is going to take that up again during budget. Now, it may be that you decide to extend that for another eight years, in which case, we would add it to our housing element and say, yes, we're committed to do this program. It may be that you want to sunset the program as originally planned and turn your attention to another population. It's just that it isn't something that you would commit to, like the Section 8 program, that is a traditional program that we anticipate to run through the entire cycle. Similarly, programs for student rental assistance and family rental assistance. They're not long-term programs. You've got a sunset on them. Important, we'll do them, but you won't see them listed here. Another point to make is that we are in the sixth eight-year cycle, meaning we've been doing housing for 40 years. There's a lot of good, solid goals, policies, and programs that you and councils before you have implemented. There are sections of the plan where we say that we don't add any new policies or programs. Again, it doesn't mean that those goals aren't going to be addressed. What it means is the existing policies and programs are adequate and appropriate to address that goal. Conversely, there are some strategies prescribed by state law that are new to this cycle. As a result, all the programs are brand-new, things that we haven't done before. So it may be that we talk about the program, and there's some detail that we still need to work out as exactly how it's going to, going to work. With that as a backdrop, I'd like to reintroduce you to Amanda Trupiano. She's a principal with de novo planning group. She's spoken to you before, and she will walk you through this draft housing element. Amanda?
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor and members of the council. I appreciate you having me here tonight. I do have a presentation for you. We have quite a bit of information to cover tonight, and I find that it's helpful to both share a presentation and describe the draft housing element as well. So with your patience, we will walk through the presentation and then be able to answer any questions you may have. So with that, I'll go ahead and start sharing my screen. So give me just a moment to get the logistics worked out, and we'll go ahead and get started. For tonight's presentation, we'll be specifically discussing the public review draft 2021 to 2029 housing element, including revisions made to the draft as a result of public comments and specifically comments received through the Department of Housing and Community Development that I'll refer to as HCD. Some of this information has been presented to you previously, but as a reminder for yourselves and for the public joining us, I did want to provide some information on the background of housing elements. Again, having a housing element is a requirement for all cities and counties in the state of California. It is a required element or chapter of your general plan. But unlike other chapters, a housing element must be updated every eight years according to those predetermined cycles as described previously. The California Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD, sets both a regional housing needs number and reviews and provides certification of housing elements. In between the state and the local agency is your metropolitan planning organization, or your MPO. And for the City of Glendale, that's the Southern California Association of Governments, or SCAG. SCAG is a council of governments that covers six counties in Southern California and includes approximately 197 jurisdictions. And SCAG is responsible for serving as an intermediary between the state and its statewide objectives and local requirements. So the SCAG members had a target due date of delivery of their housing element by mid-October of 2021, plus the discussed, previously discussed 120-day grace period, which takes us through the timeframe of February 12th of 2022. SCAG also is responsible for adopting an RTB or SES, which plans for future transit and land use changes. And each agency's housing element must be consistent with these regional plans. So we're going to spend some time tonight speaking specifically about your RENA, or your regional housing needs allocation. And I wanted to provide some context just so we have a good understanding. So every eight years, again, on these cycles, the state determines the housing need across the entire state. So for the next eight years, the state has determined there's a need of 3.4 million units. Then they determine how much of those statewide units go to each MPO, and down here, again, in Southern California, that's SCAG. In this cycle, SCAG was assigned an allocation of 1.3 million units. Then SCAG uses a methodology that determines how much of each of its member agencies receive a portion of that overall regional allocation. This cycle, SCAG looked at specific indicators related to regional connectivity, including proximity to highways, trains, and buses, proximity to regional job centers, and other access to goods and services, which resulted in a larger-than-average allocation for the City of Glendale for this planning period. The city's 2021 to 2029 RENA is 13,425 units, broken down by four indicators in terms of household income, very low, low, moderate, or above moderate income as a relationship to the area median income for the county of Los Angeles. As you may remember, the city considered an appeals process. SCAG did adopt a very, very fine, narrow set of rationale for delivering appeals of a city's RENA, and the methodology to determine whether an appeal was appropriate was not, not an option, such as the city's existing general planner zoning were not a basis for which to appeal your RENA. Fifty-two jurisdictions filed an appeal, and only two were partially granted. That resulted in a reallocation of approximately 3,100 units or less than a quarter of a percent of the overall SCAG allocation back to the region. Throughout this process, staff in the city has been working diligently to engage the public during a very unusual time to solicit public input on such an important project. There's a dedicated website, glendaleplan.com, hosted a virtual survey in multiple languages, receiving over 300 responses, which are summarized as part of the draft housing element, conducted an in-person open house in August, when it was a possibility to do so, multiple advertisements on social media, direct outreach to stakeholders, briefings with the City Council, community presentations to interest groups, a 30-day public review period for the draft housing element, and then a public hearing of the Planning Commission in December of last year. So the policy document is primarily comprised of three levels of decision-making criteria. The first is a goal. A goal is really a long-range statement that describes where the city wants to be in the future. The policies are action-oriented statements that direct the city to complete certain protocols to achieve those goals, and these are supported by a series of programs that are specific implementation steps with metrics, milestones, and timeframes for the city to progress towards over the planning period. The housing element itself is broken into two main pieces. The first is the housing plan. This includes those goals, policies, and programs, along with a set of quantified objectives towards production of new units, conservation and preservation of existing units. Part two is the background report. This includes all of the background information and research that supports your housing plan, including an assessment of the city's progress towards its fifth cycle or prior cycle RENA, an assessment of your current and future housing needs, a discussion of constraints to housing development, a description of available resources, and assessments of your housing. Two appendices support the primary parts of the housing element. The first is the site inventory, which includes a map of the location of sites identified as appropriate to accommodate a portion of your city's RENA, as well as a list of the specific parcel characteristics, including size, APN, current zoning, current land use information, and the total capacity anticipated at each site. Appendix B is a summary of the public outreach, including a description of the activities, copies of advertisements and presentations, a summary of the community survey, as well as the public comments received on the draft housing element. So as was previously discussed, the housing element includes goals, policies, and programs as part of the housing plan. The six goals included in the housing element were all included in your current element. These continue to be appropriate policy, goal directions for which the city would strive to achieve. The policies included in the housing plan, many, 43 of them, are current policies that are working well and have been maintained. The city has included 10 new policies to support the community's vision and goals. It should be noted, as I will discuss later, as a result of HCD comments, only one policy was removed from the draft element, policy 1.11, and it was rephrased as a program for HCD's comments. In terms of programs, there are 20 existing programs that have been maintained, including the cities implementing the city's inclusionary housing ordinance, the support the city provides in terms of development of affordable housing, rental rights protections, and fair housing requirements. There are 14 new programs, three of which were added as a result of HCD comments, and we'll speak to those more a little bit later. In discussing sites that are adequate to accommodate the city's RENA, there are specific criteria that we must consider in terms of identifying appropriate sites. We need to look at the existing site conditions. As you can expect, the vast majority of sites in Glendale are occupied, so we do need to describe the existing uses of the site. We need to define the realistic capacity potential of these locations, describe site size and ownership patterns. And in particular, the state has found that sites less than half an acre in size are not appropriate to accommodate a portion of the city's lower-income RENA without substantial evidence to the contrary, which is quite difficult to demonstrate. And we also need to look at a demonstrated history of development, both at the local and regional level, to describe the likelihood of development of these projects. So as a reminder, it is the city's job to set the stage and ensure that there's enough land appropriately zoned and designated to accommodate your RENA at all of those income levels, and these are referred to as your housing sites. The City of Glendale itself does not build housing. Private market builds housing, both affordable and market-rate housing. Again, it's the city's responsibility to set the stage through your general plan, your zoning ordinance, and other planning documents like specific plans to ensure that there are adequate sites available to accommodate your RENA. As a reminder, the city is also obligated to comply with what we call no-net-loss requirements, which is a part of state housing law, which basically means that as developments are proposed at locations identified as a housing site, the city must, the city must consider the proposed project against the assumptions in the housing element and make a finding that there remains sufficient sites to accommodate the city's RENA at all income levels. Or if the approval of the project would result in a deficiency of sites available, specific action must be taken to find replacement sites to maintain the city's ability to accommodate its RENA. And this is recorded in a required program of the housing plan. The RENA strategy to accommodate the city's sixth-cycle RENA falls within several categories. The first is to look specifically at credits towards progress, towards meeting your sixth-cycle RENA. You can look at projects that are constructed or under-construted during the planning period. That means projects constructed or under-construction since July 1st, 2021. We also can look at the potential for multifamily units that will be converted to deed-restricted affordable units and projects that are approved but not yet in type, approved or not yet under construction. This section of the housing element saw significant changes as a result of the public review and comment process, and I'll describe those more later in the presentation. We also look to accommodate the remaining RENA after deducting credits through a series of strategies. We've included six as part of the City of Glendale's housing element. Can look at projects that are under consideration but not yet approved, the potential production of accessory dwelling units, the very limited number of vacant sites already designated for residential uses, underutilized residential sites where their existing development falls well under the potential capacity of the site and demonstrate qualities similar to other underutilized residential sites that have undergone redevelopment during that have undergone redevelopment during the past planning period, underutilized sites designated for mixed-use development, including the development of residential uses, and sites in the downtown-specific plan area. On the screen is an exhibit that is included in the draft housing element that describes the specific credits applied towards the city's sixth-cycle RENA, as well as the capacity at each site, demonstrating a surplus of overall sites of approximately 6.5%. Again, you will see some significant changes, specifically to the credits line from the draft housing element, that have been reviewed and vetted, both with public and with HCD, to ensure that these credits are adequately accommodated. And this information is provided in the redline version to you, so you can clearly see which projects have been counted as credits towards the city's progress towards its RENA. The housing element for the cycle also requires a new chapter dedicated to affirmatively furthering fair housing and conducting a robust analysis of fair housing issues in the community as it relates to housing policy and the city's sites inventory. As part of this analysis, on Figure 15, included in Section 6 of the background report of the housing element, the city has analyzed the location of potential sites to accommodate its RENA in relationship to opportunity levels as determined by the TCAC Opportunity Area Map. This is an important map to consider because it helps provide some insight as to those locations where future funding or affordable projects will be provided. And although we were able to map sites identified in the city's housing inventory, it should also be noted that development of accessory dwelling units or junior accessory dwelling units are expected to occur throughout the community, not just at those points where I could put a pinpoint on the map. So those are distributed in areas of varying opportunity, including in areas of high opportunity. We've also considered the role of these sites in terms of proximity to transit. It is increasingly important to locate housing, goods, services, and jobs in proximity to improve air quality, reduce VRT, and provide easy access to public transportation, which is especially important for lower-income households, persons with disabilities, or seniors, which may have limited mobility access. The vast majority of sites at all income levels are located in areas within a half-mile of a transit station, either existing or proposed. And we find that this also further supports the city's objectives for sustainability and green building and development. The draft housing element was presented for a 30-day public review from November 1st through December 1st of 2021. Emails were sent to all interested stakeholders that were registered on the website, posts to social media. The draft was made available both on the project website and the city's website. We were in front of you on November 2nd for a presentation of some of this information, presented it to the community on November 15th, also a presentation upon request to the Glendale Association of Realtors and the Glendale Homeowners Coordinating Council. And staff continues to be available for presentations upon request to discuss the housing element. The city received six comments on the draft housing element, which are included in Appendix B during the 30-day review period, and three additional comments that were received after the review period, which have also been recorded, considered, and responded to as part of Appendix B. You will see that the housing element has been prepared in a redline format, so you can clearly track changes to the public draft that was circulated and the information that was both presented to the Planning Commission at their December public hearing, as well as to yourselves tonight. In particular, significant updates to the site's inventory included an updated list of parcels identified as a credit towards the RENA, an updated list of proposed projects with current information. Some new projects have been proposed since the original list was prepared. The identification of some smaller sites in downtown and additional mixed-use areas, although not appropriate to accommodate the city's lower-income RENA, these are opportunity sites for additional residential development, additional property owned by the city, as well as some modified income distributions to downtown to reflect a variety of income levels accommodated. The Fair Housing Chapter is also supplemented with additional information, and several programs were modified as a result of those public comments. So that brings us to receipt of the comment letter from HCD, and I might call this a comment letter or a findings letter. HCD, again, is responsible for reviewing every agency's draft housing element. This is their job. And they review it and provide direction on changes that need to be made in order to comply with state law. These generally fall within four areas, and I'll discuss these more in detail. The first is affirmatively furthering fair housing discussion. Again, this is a new requirement of housing elements, so it's expected that they are going to continue providing some additional guidance on how to best address this topic. Additional information on the site's inventory, an analysis of constraints of housing, and implementation of the housing programs. Looking specifically at the changes made to the fair housing section as a result of HCD's comments, the section was really comprehensively updated to provide more information on enforcement and outreach activities, a more thorough analysis of local and regional trends, including concentration of areas by race, disability, familial status, income, and affluence, a more thorough analysis of local and regional access to opportunities with specific indicators related to education, economy, transportation, and the environment, an expanded analysis of disproportionate housing needs, better connections between the housing inventory and the city's responsibility to affirmatively further fair housing, and modified the housing program to address state requirements and connect those to the analysis. The site's inventory, again, specific information was provided for the status of all projects listed as a credit towards the city's RENA to determine their appropriateness, provided additional support for the capacity assumptions included for each site, including a site-by-site description of the existing uses, included in Appendix A, a modification of the credits for those market-rate units that were previously converted to deed-restricted moderate-income units. This is a new requirement of state law, AB 787, only was implemented in 2021. There have been no certified housing elements that have used this as a strategy to accommodate a portion of the city's RENA. So HCD is working out the guidance and rationale, and they did provide some additional guidance that indicated that only one of the projects previously identified as appropriate for inclusion in the strategy could remain in the housing element. The sites that converted from market-rate to deed-restricted prior to July 1st of 2021 will be included as a credit towards progress towards your fifth-cycle RENA. We also provided some additional clarification on zoning and programs to address state requirements for a variety of housing types, clarified the feasibility and assumptions developed by the city to arrive at its ADU projections, and additional information on available infrastructure and environmental constraints. Speaking specifically about the analysis of potential government and non-government constraints, responded to specific findings regarding land use controls, fees, the city's permanent processing procedures and on- and off-site improvement requirements, an expanded analysis of non-government constraints that specifically related to the cost of development, permit fees, and times, and an expanded strategy to retain potential affordable units that could convert to market-rate units during the planning period. A number of programs were modified or added in order to address their findings. Nine programs were modified to include more discrete timelines, objectives, clarify the city's role in implementation. A number of programs were added or significantly updated based on these findings. Specifically, the three programs that were added to the draft included Program 1G, which is previously identified non-baked and vacant sites. This is a state requirement that must be included to comply with state law. We also included Program 1H, an adequate alternative sites to identify the potential for the conversion of market-rate to moderate-income units during the planning period, and Program 9C to demonstrate how the city will maintain general plan consistency during the planning period. Three programs were also significantly modified, 1A, 7C, and 9B, as a result of these comments. And then finally, there were just a number of comments that didn't fit nicely within those boxes, specifically just updating Appendix B to reflect additional public comments and the city's response to those. We also added an additional review of the cumulative efforts to address the needs of special needs populations that was included to the background report, as well as a section on consistency between the housing element and the general plan. So with that, that concludes my portion of the presentation, and I am certainly available to answer any questions or toggle back to any slides. But with that, I'll go ahead and stop sharing my screen so we can all rejoin the group. And I'm available here and appreciate your patience as we walked through that lengthy presentation.
You're on mute, Madam Mayor. You're on mute.
And thank you, Amanda, for that report. It is a lot to take in, but we'll do our best to get questions answered. What I'd like to do right now is take phone calls. Do we have phone calls?
Madam Mayor, I do have a caller for this item.
Okay, let's do the caller right now, and then we'll see what they have to say and go from there. Thank you.
Karen Kwak, you have three minutes, Karen. Karen Kwak, you have three minutes. Go ahead.
Hi, this is Karen Kwak. I would like to make three comments. First, I am pleased to see that our future LA Coalition also brought in making many of the same points that I did regarding the right to counsel, advanced education ordinances, and an anti-harassment ordinance, plus the fact that housing issues aren't that racial justice issues. And I was surprised at this because this is a group that I've never talked to. And this tells me that the ideas that we propose are not in any way new, radical, or extreme. These, in fact, reflect laws passed in various cities around the country, and they're widely discussed among tenant groups in Los Angeles. And yet, the fact that these ideas were absent from the original draft is exactly why I keep encouraging the Auckland City Hall to spend less time talking to the 260 developers in the city and more time talking to actual tenants who live here. And my second point is that we need more time to review this document. That I noticed that many of the longer letters were sent in by professional groups who actually work on housing issues for a living. But for actual residents of Glendale who are not paid to do this for a living, 30 days is much too short a time span to comment on a 400-page document. I noticed that most of your comments came in clusters till the end of the comment review period. So I'm certain that more residents of Glendale would have appreciated additional time to review this document and provide thoughtful feedback. And third, I apologize for being a nitpicky editor, but I couldn't help noticing two spelling errors that affect meaning. That when I discussed right to counsel, I meant it as right to legal counsel, spelled S-B-L. Although I completely agree that we have the right to counsel, C-O-U-N-C-I-L, in this context, that could actually confuse the meaning. So I would like those two changes to be made in the document. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I do have one more caller on the line.
Okay, all right, please.
Herbert Milano, you have three minutes. Go ahead, Herbert.
Thank you very much. Members of the City Council, I wanted to address to you a couple of things, but with a comment first. I want to applaud the City Council for the past few years for the significant increases in housing, especially along the downtown area and central. I think that the city has done an amazing job in trying to create additional housing. Although I see a slight problem in that a lot of the new housing is not affordable. So I have a question as to what are the obstacles that the city is having with regard to increasing the new housing that is affordable. My second question has to do with a part of the document that I have not read, and I would like to ask is whether there is a goal with regard to home ownership as opposed to rental. Glendale has approximately 2/3 of its population in multifamily housing, and it appears that we do not have enough residents who own property. And I believe that impacts citizen participation in government, for example, and has other repercussions. So is there an objective within this document to increase homeownership? And if so, how will it be done? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Milano. I think we can answer that first question, why we don't have more affordable housing being built, and that's funding. Am I correct, Mr. Milano?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of City Council, you are correct. But by the same token, staff's always looking for proper properties that we can bring to council for consideration, and you have done so over the last couple of years feverishly.
Thank you, thank you. Are there any other callers?
Madam Mayor, I do not have any more callers for this item. I have two callers waiting for oral communications.
Oh, okay. Well, then, let's open it up for council discussion. Who would like to make comments or ask questions at this point?
If I may, start with a question.
Sure, go ahead, Councilmember Brotman.
And I think I know the answer to this, but it was asked, so I want to make sure the community hears it. So we have, you know, we have an inventory of available sites. And on that inventory are many different types of housing, but there are some properties on there that are listed as eligible for historic designation. So I guess the question is, by virtue of being on this list, does that change in any way the process that a developer would have to go through to develop on that site if, you know, impacting a historic resource? Or would they go through the same process, potentially SEQA and all the rest of it that we have today? Is there anything that gets streamlined?
I can answer that. And I don't know if Ms. Truppiano has any additional comments or Mr. Lanzafin, but a project that is, for example, on a survey is potentially eligible, for example, our local register or the state or national register, and a discretionary project was proposed on that, they're still going to have to go through the SEQA process, which includes looking at whether or not that's a historic resource under SEQA. So nothing from the entitlement perspective changes. Now, there might be a project that qualifies for streamlining under the new state laws, but almost all of those, I think, have an exception for projects that are historic resource, I apologize, that are on a historic register. So there might be some that get streamlined, but not as a result of the housing element changes, more because of new state laws, such as SB 35, which provide a different level of review for certain projects. To hope that answers the question. My view, the housing element doesn't change the SEQA process that you have to go through on a particular project.
And, Mr. Brotman, I would add that not only SEQA, but it doesn't change any of our zoning or any of our process. It merely is an identification of a property, still needs to go through all of our process. There was something I was going to add to... Oh, on SB 35, we're streamlining. There may be, as Mr. Garcia said, there may be, but I think in Glendale's case, they would all have at least 50% affordable units. So while you might give up some of that process, you would be gaining a large percentage of affordable housing.
So if I could just clarify, so you're saying a project that has more than 50% affordable housing would have a different... And let's say we're impacting a historic resource or a potentially historic resource. So it would, there would be some streamlining of that process?
I think that's what Mr. Garcia was referring to.
Correct, there would be streamlining. And I believe that the only exception under SB 35 would be a project that is on a register, not necessarily potentially eligible. So that's one nuance of that state law. But again, as we had explained previously, SB 35, as it pertains to Glendale, because we've met our above-moderate numbers for a number of years now, we would be subject to the higher affordability threshold to be able to get that streamlined review.
And I would add that any project of any substance that has that much affordable component will most likely have the city involved in the project to begin with. It would need the city's funding to make it work.
Right, right, that makes sense. Okay, thanks for clarifying that.
Any other comments, questions? Councilmember Kusakian, go ahead.
So during this allocation and the way SCAG was determining how these housing numbers are divided, what consequence was there for those cities that did not build or meet their required housing numbers in the last cycle?
Very little, very little consequences.
I would, Mr. Garcia may be able to describe it better. Probably the biggest consequence would be that those projects that came forward that met those standards of, let's say you didn't make your market rate, you might then be subject to streamlining.
Sure, but that's in this round, that's, that's going forward.
But if you didn't meet it in five, in six, that's what you'd be faced with.
And, and I would agree and maybe Ms. Truppiano can correct me if I'm wrong, but the factors that they're using in the allocation are strictly the ones that, that she showed in the presentation, which are access to job centers and access to transit and those are the, there's a set of statutory factors that are included and I don't believe compliance with the fifth cycle or, or satisfaction of the fifth cycle's numbers were necessarily factor into consideration for allocating for the sixth cycle.
Okay, so if, if it wasn't necessarily factored in, but what is factored in is those criteria that you just stated. What's to differentiate a city like Glendale? What is, I'm, I'm curious to know in, in the professional, from the professional viewpoint, what differentiates, let's say, a city like Glendale from Burbank?
So the methodology would apply fairly similarly to a city, cities like Glendale and Burbank where we saw major differences in the results of the allocation methodology would be traditionally more inland empire cities with sufficient vacant land received a much larger share of the regional growth. In this round of methodology, much more weight, if you consider kind of different metrics being weighted more heavily, was provided to proximity to jobs and services, transit, and urban infill locations. So in general, a city like Glendale or Burbank or Pasadena all saw larger allocations in this cycle than you would have seen in prior cycles. Who saw smaller allocations were more suburban or rural communities with more vacant land, they saw smaller allocations than they had seen in prior cycles. And this is really.
But essentially, and I apologize to cut you off, but I want to clarify a point, at least from my understanding and anyone who's following this. So if in the last cycle, Burbank, for instance, just to use them as an example, did not build the number of required housing versus, let's say, you know, Glendale that did, in this cycle, they're not required to make up that difference that they fell short in the last cycle in any way.
That's correct. Your, and every city's allocation starts fresh every cycle.
And this is, and this is because of the SCAG, the SCAG is one of the entities making this determination or applying the formula to.
Exactly.
The requirement, okay.
And I'm sure that your, your staff would be happy to provide you with a copy of the methodology report from SCAG, which details all of those specific factors that were included in that methodology. And again, 52 agencies did appeal their RENA and only less than a quarter of percent of the overall units were reallocated as a result. Basically, not all of them were denied, but 99.99% of them were.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Brotman?
I just want to, I just want to work off of this point because I don't, I don't know, Councilmember Kusakian, whether this is really what you're asking, but the fact that Burbank, and we don't mean to be picking on Burbank, but the fact that Burbank fell significantly short of its RENA numbers in the fifth cycle has had, has had consequences for Burbank in, in that, and maybe this is SB 35, you can explain, but that rule that we just talked about where if there's 50% affordable, it goes through a streamlined process with no discretionary, no hearing, I guess, no, no discretionary review. In Burbank's case, it's 10%. Isn't that right? Because Burbank fell short. So the consequence for Burbank is that any project with 10% affordable housing now bypasses any design review, any hearing, and is approved administratively. Is that correct?
Councilmember Brotman, that is correct. Any, any city that did not meet its RENA number in the first cycle of the fifth cycle for above moderate housing is subject to.
Sorry, first half, you mean.
Is subject to have the streamlining for, for 10, for 10% affordable. There's other components to it. You have to provide, you have to pay preventing wage and there's some other components to it, but as you might imagine, it's probably much more attractive to a market developer to be able to streamline and, and at a 10% level. So just, just to, you know, provide the full picture, I just want to be clear and this is not, again, this is not our, this is not the city's fault, but there are, the, the other part of the RENA allocation is obviously there's a very low income and a lower income allocation that cities are also required to meet. And if you don't, then that's when you have to provide the 50%. But to the point that I think that all of you already made, that's, that's not something that the city can easily satisfy without additional funding sources. And just to prove a point of the 400-plus cities in California, I believe there's only 13 in the city, in the entire state that have met both their above moderate numbers and their, their numbers for lower and, and very low construction. So it's, it's a difficult thing to achieve, but given the, the, certainly the benefit to meeting your RENA numbers for the above moderate housing.
Okay, are you good, Councilmember Brotman?
Yeah, I was just, I just wanted to clarify that point that.
Okay, alright. Councilmember Najarian or Agajanian?
I have a couple of questions. And I just want to, I just want to put this in perspective to those folks that are tuning in and wondering what we're talking about. Those folks that were not happy with the development that they've seen downtown, in downtown Glendale, perhaps can attribute that to the, the housing element process and the RENA numbers which were imposed upon us by the state Housing and Community Development Department. Those that do like housing, well, you can attribute that housing to the HCD. This is something that really was, was out of our hands. I do have a question. I understand that HCD, speaking of HCD, I believe that they did have a discussion with our staff after they saw our draft and raised some issues. Did we address all those issues to their satisfaction? If someone knows that.
Councilmember Najarian, this is Eric Kraus with the Community Development. So we've addressed all the comments, we're not sure if they're going to be fully satisfied with those yet. That's something we would be submitting once council adopts the, the element itself. So we'll be providing our responses to their comment letter as part of the housing element moving forward. So we have responded to all our comments to this point. We just need kind of essentially to have them review those and get additional feedback from them, whether or not we've met their, their, all the comments that they suggested.
Okay, and in this housing element, we're meeting our RENA obligation without any downzoning. We're using available sites, we're using underutilized residential ADUs and the like. We can't use those again in the seventh cycle, can we? I mean, once you use those, that's it. We, we can't repeat, you know, the argument that we've got 2,000 ADUs that are available for construction and we've got underutilized sites. At the next cycle, we're going to be faced with a downzoning. Am I, I mean, is that just, we're speculating, but is that a fair, fair assumption that we're going to have to make, you know, zoning decisions that permit more units per acre? We didn't do that this time because we used up all our slack, if you will, to get to our, our numbers. Is that, am I correct in understanding that?
Councilmember Najarian, members of the City Council, so we, the, we found the RENA allocation within the existing zoning, we're not, I believe you meant upzoning, so we're not upzoning any property.
Upzoning, sorry, upzoning.
All the zoning is going to remain constant as it is on the ground today. I'm not sure about whether or not you can utilize those sites again. I don't know, they might have different direction moving forward in the next cycle. I haven't heard that, that you wouldn't be able to use it. You certainly couldn't use it if it's been developed as part of the, the sixth cycle, you wouldn't be able to recapture that information. But I don't know if Amanda has heard differently, but I haven't heard anything about whether or not you can reuse it for the next cycle, which I guess would be the seventh at that point.
So, I mean.
Yes, thank you. You can reuse sites, you can reuse sites. Some sites that are included in your housing element now were identified in the fifth cycle. It is allowed and appropriate to re-identify sites. What the state would be looking for in this cycle and in the seventh cycle would just be, what else is the city doing to help make those development projections more realistic? So that's the types of programs that are included in your housing plan, strategies that the city has to help reduce government or non-government constraints. So I would expect in the seventh cycle that you could continue to rely on some sites identified in the sixth cycle, but of course, the exact parameters or specific requirements that may apply to those sites eight years from now, I don't know, but that's where maybe streamlining or things like that, I could imagine eight years in the future, those types of things might apply to sites that were identified in prior inventories. But you, you can, you can re-include that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Agajanian?
And if, if they can briefly, Ms. Truppi, Truppi, no, I'm sorry if I said it wrong. Can you briefly touch that again? Page 11, site criteria.
That was on the presentation portion, correct?
Yes, your presentation, yes.
Yes, no problem. Let me pull that one up again and we can certainly go to this slide. Okay, you should see the site criteria slide on the screen here.
Yeah. Can you briefly explain again about the criteria?
Sure, so identifying appropriate sites to accommodate the city's RENA is provided, we are provided guidance from HCD. Again, some of it is in statute, but a lot of it is guidance in something that HCD calls their sites inventory guidebook. And it's a step-by-step process that describes the qualities of a site that warrant them most suitable to accommodate a portion of the city's RENA. Every city is unique and every city gets the opportunity to describe local conditions, projections, capacity assumptions. But the state does provide some guidance and then depending on the qualities of the site, the city is responsible for providing evidence and information to help demonstrate the acceptability of a particular site. So we've grouped these into four key categories. The first is the existing site conditions. Again, this is a relatively new requirement of state law. It requires a city to look at what types of uses are developed on the site. At Glendale, like many other cities that don't have a whole heck of a lot of vacant land, all of your sites are essentially occupied, so we do need to describe the presence of existing uses. We also need to determine a realistic capacity, looking at things like if you have setback requirements or parking requirements, you won't develop a site at 100% of its maximum density. It's going to be some percentage of the maximum based on evidence or development patterns. We have to look at size and ownership. Size is a particularly important one in Glendale and in most jurisdictions. Again, as I mentioned, the state finds that sites must be between the sizes of half an acre and 10 acres to be appropriate to accommodate a portion of your lower income RENA. Smaller sites or larger sites are okay for your moderate or above moderate income RENA, but small sites, the state really, really doesn't like them. And it's quite difficult to demonstrate that those types of sites would be affordable to lower income households according to the requirements of state law. And then finally, we also look at patterns of development, both in the city and in the region. For example, in your housing element is a description of projects that were developed within the downtown specific plan, determining the actual effective density of those projects and using that as rationale for determining the potential capacity of a site.
Thank you. Now, can you go to page 18 of your presentation?
Sure. Okay.
We went through this before and now you presented to the RENA, yes? And Southern California, they're, they looked at this and HCD made comments on what we have presented as Councilmember Najarian asked. So now what will happen that they do not agree, because I guess they didn't approve it yet? Did they approve our project or our presentation?
The process is for the state to review a draft. They provide comments. The city makes amendments to the draft based on those comments. Should the City Council decide to adopt that housing element, the adopted element is then sent back to the state and then the state completes a second review. That, that is the protocol for the state's review. So they have not certified the element yet, that would happen after an element is adopted.
Okay, thank you. Now, the way I understand this is they're saying that you have to create a situation that developers, not us, they can develop the sites and have more presidential units, whatever the number is, 13,000 or whatever they said we have to have in eight years, right? They say you don't have to create a, you know, restrictions that developer cannot do this. Am I right? This is the idea, not to create.
I think you're right. The idea is that the city has control over your land use decisions and the housing element describes your current zoning, your current general plan, your current zoning and your current specific plans, and demonstrates that there are available sites for the private market to develop those units if they wanted to at the sites that are appropriately designated by your zoning code or in your specific plans.
Okay. So if they want to, like if, because there was a project, housing project, big housing project, of course, it was not affordable one, but however, and they think it's hard to create any housing elements or any units in Glendale and they changed it to make a hotel out of it. So if nobody comes forward next eight years and does anything, we are not, we are not wrong or we are not at fault based on what you have presented. Nobody comes and builds anything.
That, that's correct, Mr. Agajanian, and if the site remains undeveloped, probably put that on the next cycle's inventory, say that you could build housing on there. There was some, I think it was almost 700 units.
Yeah.
That they.
So our obligation is not to create roadblocks for those who will develop the site.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, alright. I, I would thank you councilmembers. I'd like to go to the new programs, if I could, Program 1B. And I, I've gotten a lot of emails and comments about, there's nothing in this about zoning or rezoning, upzoning, downzoning. And yet, in this particular Program 1B, it cites that, and correct me if I misunderstand this, that if a potential development occurs on a site and they are not, it results in the reduction of capacity below the needed to accommodate the low income, moderate and above moderate income, that's related to the realistic capacity potential, then the City Council can identify that and if necessary, we can rezone so that there is no net loss. Now, that would, that is right, it stated right there that we can adjust the zoning if need be. Am I right?
If you have to.
If we have to, right.
You have to rezone, but you may also, let's say that in our inventory, and Amanda will correct me if I, if I'm getting this somewhat wrong, but let's say in the inventory you have 100 units. We've listed the potential for 100 units. We've listed the potential for 100 units, and we count that towards our RINA. And the site develops with 50 units. We're now 50 units short. One, do we, we look, do we have capacity in our existing inventory? If we do not, we'll need to go and find a parcel that would add 50 units to our inventory, that, that, that could be developed to 50 units to add to our inventory. If we can't do that, then we, we could rezone.
Okay, so that, there is that capability. The, the reason I say that is because, a, as I understand this, it's a, you know, it's, it's, where are my notes? I haven't written down. It's a flexible document, you know, it's a living, breathing document. We can change it, we can tweak it, we can add to it. If there are things in it that we want or that we decide that are necessary to reach or to at least try to reach our goal for the RINA numbers, we're able to do that. Council is able to do that.
Yes, and for the most part, as I said, you can add to it.
Yes.
Taking away is, is a little more problematic because, again, we're, we're agreeing, we're committing to do these things. So if you want to add to it, you can. If by happenstance, we lose, let's say, part of our commitment because a site isn't fully developed, we're obligated to meet that commitment and go find another site or rezone to accommodate that.
Okay, that's, that's good. Okay, so are there any more phone calls?
Madam Mayor, there are no phone calls for this item.
No more phone calls?
No more phone calls for this item.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Agagianian?
On, I don't know what's this page number? Housing Needs Assessment, the big report which we have with 400 pages. In there, there is a page, which I can't find the page number, that's the problem. It says 3A introduction and background. In there, it says jurisdiction, Glendale, 2010, 191719. 2020, 204,392. So the change is 12,673, which changes 6.6%. Where we see Burbank has very little change, La Cuenca, Pasadena, they all are lower, specifically South Pasadena and even Los Angeles County. So is that pushed because those numbers are not correct? We were told that population of Glendale is not 204,000, it's less. So does that change anything on that RINA numbers? Because the numbers doesn't match the way one government entity, they say you are only 196,000. Here says the population is 204,000. This is big change, am I right?
Amanda, do you understand the question?
I do, and I do see, this is on the background report, page 26, in comparing population trends and growth between 2010 and 2020. The, the short answer to your question is no. This has no bearing or relationship to the city's RINA. If there is a corruption that needs to be made here for the record, we will definitely confirm that. But this is a, this is an internal assessment that was included in the housing element, and it has no relationship to the determination of SCAG in the city's RINA for this cycle. This is background information.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
This is less population, less population should the fact, RINA numbers too? Why wouldn't have any impact on the RINA numbers?
Essentially, SCAG did not use this table for their calculations. This table is included in the housing element. As a presentation of this information, we'll certainly confirm those numbers based on the data source provided. But SCAG uses its own, its own background and content and information to determine those allocations, separate from the information presented in this, in this report. Their allocation was already long complete by the time that this was prepared.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Galanian?
Yes. Madam Mayor, Member City Council, since we don't have any more callers, right? City Clerk, I, I need to bring to your attention, you were copied on an email from Mr. Van Gorder that came in late last night, and it contained a number of comments and questions that staff is going through and hoping to have addressed. We don't have the responses to those comments or questions for tonight's meeting. So I would recommend if, if you would postpone this item, at least adoption of the housing element until next week, to give staff the opportunity to go over those comments in detail and, and address them accordingly.
Yes, and, and I hope that Mr. Van Gorder is watching because I think this gives a lot of credence to, to his questions and also to the fact that we are listening to those of you that are writing in and calling in and making comments about this housing element. So with that, and with that suggestion, we, can I have a motion? Do I need a motion, Mr. Garcia, two or just two? Yes.
Correct, yeah. Madam Mayor, it would be appropriate then to, if the council is inclined, to move it to continue the hearing until next week's meeting without further notice, without further public notice.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I'll make that motion.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Kusakian. Second?
Second.
Anyone? Mr. Bro, Councilmember Brotman, fine. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agagianian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Kusakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Devine?
Yes, thank you all. And thanks to all of those that, that have written to us and commented and, and actually studied this to, to a great extent. Okay, then, what's next, please?
Madam Mayor, next item is number 12, oral communication. Discussion is limited to items not are part of this agenda. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The same manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report. Madam Mayor, currently I have three callers waiting on the line.
Okay, let's hear them, please.
Edwin, you're live. You have five minutes, Edwin. I do not have your last name, Edwin.
Hi, good evening, Councilor. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Can.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and members. I am calling you guys today to bring this to your attention. Regarding the right of theft on the railroad tracks, what's going on is that thieves are becoming more sophisticated at theft by climbing on Union Pacific freight trains, climbing onboard with bolt cutters to cut the locks of the shipment cargo to steal the value both from it. Most of these stolen items ends up on the black market that is sold at huge discount. As a result of this type of theft, we're starting to see a shortage of merchandise, higher shipping prices, and higher merchandise prices. I've learned that there has been talks about forming a task force by partnering with local law enforcement agencies to help fight this type of theft. So far, I've learned that the California Highway Patrol, LA County Sheriff, and LAPD are the three law enforcement agencies joining the task force to assist Union Pacific to fight this theft. So my question to this council is, I would like to know if this city, Glendale Police Department, would become a member of the task force to help fight rail theft within the city of Glendale jurisdiction? Because every time I see a freight train that's slowing down or coming to a stop, it concerns me because I saw a news story about this type of theft in Lincoln Heights, where thousands of stolen packages were stolen off of these freight train shipment cargo. And my other question that I'd like to ask is, which is my second question, has this city or the school district ever questioned the California Lottery by doing an audit to see if the California Lottery is paying out its fair share of, of, of funding, that the percentage of the sales of lottery tickets does fund education system? And I'd like to know if, Mayor Devine, I know you're, you have a background in education. Have you ever questioned or ever audited the California Lottery about if they are paying out the proper amount of funding? Because I've heard that the California Lottery has been audited, and they do owe the California Public Education System around $36 million. And this was a news story that was conducted two years ago by CBS2 News. And that's my question. These are the two questions I have. So thanks, Mayor. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Our, first of all, I want to say about the lottery, being a former educator, yes, I have questioned it. I have not audited it, and I have my doubts where that money is going, but I think that's more a question for the school district than the school board. Is the, the theft on the rail, on the rails in our purview, in our police department purview? Mr. Galanian? Mr. Garcia?
Madam Mayor, that, that falls under the purview of MTA and MetroLink.
And LA County Sheriff.
And the county sheriff.
Yes, that's what I thought. Okay, thank you. Edwin, I hope you got your answers. Our next caller, please.
Vahai Sarajan, you have five minutes. Vahai, go ahead.
Honorable Mayor and City Council members, I've been appearing before you since November 2021 about the issue of racism in the city of Glendale. I presented facts and evidence that strongly suggests the black, that black kids at several short-term rentals in the city of Glendale were subject of racially motivated police service calls. Based on their calls, the city council, this city council banned short-term rentals, which effectively kept, kept out black people and other people of color from the city of Glendale. At this juncture, I would like to know what the city council has done about the facts and evidence that I have presented. No one from the city council has addressed the issues I've got up yet. As far, as far as I know, this has not been calendared as an agenda item to be investigated and discussed as would be expected. I have done my part. I brought you the facts, week after week, had a great sacrifice to my time. I have asked the Glendale Police Department to investigate. They have refused, stating that people have the right to be racist. The police department's position is that they will respond to calls whether or not its target is a black person who's doing nothing wrong. And when they discover that, in fact, the target of this racially motivated police service call was doing nothing wrong, they will not investigate the caller or instigate the police service call. I have asked the Office of Community Development to investigate. Mr. Lanza Fams' office has refused to undertake any kind of investigation. I'm requesting that this matter be calendared as an agenda item. I hope that this will happen. I, I hope that you will accept my request. In the meantime, I have contacted the Office of Adam Schiff and have discussed the issue with his staff. They have suggested that I first bring this issue to the mayor and the Glendale Police Department. I have now done that. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, thank you. I will say that we are working with the Anti-Racial Discrimination Coalition here in, in Glendale to, to ensure equity and to make sure that we have programs that are supporting nondiscrimination. And I, I, in, in defense of our police department, I, I, I kind of questioned some of the comments that you're saying that they made, but that's something for the chief to, if you write an email to the chief and maybe ask him about that, he can respond to your questions. Do we have any other callers?
Madam Mayor, I do have one more caller right now.
Okay, okay.
Herbert Milano, you have five minutes, Herbert. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mayor Devine, members of the city council. I have a PowerPoint presentation, if the city clerk can facilitate it. I don't know if it's up, but I will start. I'd like to encourage the city council to begin evaluating a capital improvement program before the budget sessions begin, I believe it's in April. And specifically, I'd like the city council to, to look carefully at the deferred or postponed CIT. Could we look at the second slide, please?
Sure, Herbert, let me pull it up.
We're not, we're not seeing it, Mr. Milano.
Give me a second. I'm having some technical difficulties with my mouse. Give me a second.
Since we have a time delay, I'm not...
I have stopped the clock, Mr. Milano.
Is it up? Okay.
Give me a second. Mr. Milano, it is up.
Okay, thank you very much. On the second slide, if I were to display that, please?
Sure, give me a second.
If, if we were to look at the pavement maintenance visually or through the formal evaluation that comes out every five years, we can infer that there is a significant number of miles of roadways that are in need of reconstruction. Based on the number of miles that Glendale has, which is 378, and the frequency that reconstruction is needed on average, according to engineers, which is every 20 years, and the actual number of reconstruction. If we take a look at the second, the next slide, please. Out of the 378 miles, the city, if it were to maintain it on an average of, you know, an average life of 20 years per, on average, the city would need to reconstruct 18 miles annually. But in the last 10 years, for example, the city has reconstructed less than half a mile. And that's on page 221 of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. So the lack of infrastructure funding for pavement reconstruction is evident with the listing of the number of parcels throughout the city and the initial light that is evident on Central Glendale, Glendale Avenue, and predominantly multifamily housing areas in Southern Glendale. So I brought in a couple of slides, not too many, just to show you the conditions of the roadways like Glendale Avenue or Main Street, and pictures of, I think I have one picture of Central and another one of Glendale Avenue as well. I'd like to suggest that the city council take a close look. The information is on the CAFRA, and of course, we also have it on the budget regarding the amount allocated every year. I'd like to suggest that the notes in the financial study on page 219 of the CAFRA be revised. This is what appears on the notes on page 219 of the CAFRA. The city has only resorted to reconstruction on rare occasions over the last decade, which showcases the durable quality of the streets in Glendale. To my mind, that particular statement on the official reports of the city is not quite truthful. uh, is not quite truthful. And, uh, and the pavement management report that you, you see, uh, last year is also evident that we have a significant number of those that are in dire need of reconstruction and that the city would need to reconstruct, uh, at least 18 miles a year or budget somewhere close to $15 million annually. So I'm suggesting to the city council to begin the process of the CIT well before the budget study session so that it can be a price of the needs of the city. For many years, I've been told that the reason for the pavement is not maintained is because there is a need to maintain the infrastructure below the roadways, such as the water mains and the sewers, et cetera. So if the city doesn't budget properly for replacement of the water mains or the Glendale Water and Power, then of course it doesn't make sense to replace the, uh, or re- or reconstruct the roadway. So I think we are in a double bind with regard to funding for the CIT. And my suggestion to the city council is to begin the process of evaluating the CIT well before you start the budget study session. Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, I have a question from Mr. Milano.
Yes, go ahead, uh, Councilmember Agagianian.
Milano, are you still on the line?
Yes, I'm still here. Mr. Agagianian, I'm still here.
What's the, what's the reason that you did such a, spent such a time and, uh, your time and you found places that the road is not in a good situation? Why wouldn't say where it is rather than say road near Kenwood and California? What's the reason? You could tell where this is so maybe our staff would know exactly where it, it happened so they would go and repair the, that spot? When you were saying in the very beginning, the very beginning, there was a street I, I was surprised to see such a street. The very first picture, which was side of the, uh, street, I mean, at the end of the road, was in such a dire situation. So they would know where it is, so maybe they, that would help them to go and find the spot.
Uh, yes, Mr. Agagianian, I, I think I can answer it two ways. First, I'll identify the street. The very first picture is, is California, about, uh, 200, no, less than that, maybe 100, uh, yards from, uh, east of Brand Boulevard. So it's a major connector road. And as you can see by the shape of this, uh, of this street, um, this type of alligator-type skin that you see there is evident of a street that has not been repaired in more than maybe 40 years. And there are so many streets of similar, uh, condition that it is already in the report of the payment study that the Department of Public Works has. Uh, the other, uh, areas, like the large parcel that you saw there that's about, uh, about a yard wide, uh, that's, uh, on Kenwood Street, just south of California. The, uh, I have identified and presented this list and submitted them officially, uh, many times. Uh, but pretty much the whole, this, the area, which is the gateway area of Glendale, I don't know if it's still called that way, which is between Brand Boulevard and Glendale Avenue, uh, between north of Broadway and the 134 freeway. It's an area, especially one that is residential. But we haven't had the roads fixed in decades. And I believe that the, uh, Public Works can give you a more, a more accurate assessment or I can come back with more pictures and identify the exact location.
Yeah, but the best would be that you specifically say where it is, that this way we would save time for our staff rather than go and look for it, you know? Thank you, thank you, Mr. Milano.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Milano. Um, I, Mr. Galanian, don't we do studies on the conditions of our streets and then select where we're going to be, uh, paving, uh, from that data?
Yes, uh, Mayor Devine, Member City Council, you are absolutely correct. I believe it was last year that we completed a, our Public Works Department completed a comprehensive pavement management program that evaluated every single segment of every roadway within the city limits and, uh, recorded their condition. And as funding permits, as, as council appropriates funding for it, and over the last year, uh, you have actually, uh, uh, from the previous years, you have, uh, appropriate additional funding in the tune of $15 million a year that will go towards rehabilitation of these, uh, pavements. And the caller is, is, uh, accurate in, in saying that, uh, a lot of components go into the decision-making as to the location of these roadways that need to be repaired, including underground infrastructure, uh, like water and sewer and fiber optic lines that will need to be repaired or replaced uh, to begin with before we go in and, uh, repave these streets so we don't have to redo them.
Right, and, and you know, I just, uh, as, uh, Councilmember Agagianian mentioned, you know, if we, uh, give specific locations, especially for the potholes, uh, spot repairs can be made. And I know that, uh, Public Works goes out and does that. So, uh, if Mr. Milano, just as, uh, Councilmember Agagianian suggested, you know, instead of saying, well, it's on Colorado, it's in Kenwood or California in Kenwood, it's on the 1200 block or it's, you know, at this address so that, uh, you know, it's very possible that, um, a spot repair could be done. Uh, thank you, do we have any more callers?
Madam Mayor, we have no more callers.
All right, thank you very much, and what's next, please?
We have no new business, it'd be adjournment.
For In Memory of Patrick Camp.
So moved.
Second.
Second? We are adjourned at 7:56, thank you all, good night.
Good night.
Good night.